Find by a number of people.
You know, they can all just stand up and raise their hand and say, I don't know, we can identify who they are, just.
Yeah.
I like, I really like that.
Okay. Whenever you're ready. We are, and I'm not sure. Go ahead and.
Joe will just help.
It is, it's recording.
Okay.
If we can't get it to work.
Hold up.
Um, nope. So you won't be this one. This one's where.
And. Is there anybody on?
It's just us for now.
Oh, it, it just shut up.
It will, it will come back on, and for whatever reason, it does this to us.
I don't like it when you come in.
Yeah.
So.
What am I doing here?
She might wanna think was that one?
Get a rope of box.
I know.
So it's changed, it's changed my life.
I love that.
Plug in your, your little earbuds to listen while we put this to bed. They can watch TV, so tired of watching things like. Yeah, they just turn into a remote. Also, our key, our smart TV stopping so smart and updated operating system. So I couldn't get like some of the streaming, I couldn't get Hulu anymore. What am I paying for? I may have to watch them on computer. And now I get everything. I love TV.
Is this one still on?
Yeah, it's going in and out. We turn on signals, the current report. I think maybe like, it might've come listening.
And now we're going before she.
It's flipping, oh, okay.
No, I think we, we just. For some reason. There are.
There you go.
I'll watch it for you, Greg, if you want.
Are we all set?
Yeah, we have Ruby and Jeff.
Very good evening and welcome everybody to the Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty four, planning board meeting. Uh, and at this point, I'll add for all that are willing and able to arrive.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jen, good evening, we'll begin our meetings uh with any public comment and we'll start with public comment if anybody's here in the audience. If you have any public comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move to Zoom, is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment? Nope, okay, seeing none, that's a fairly straightforward meeting tonight, and we'll now move right into the approval of the meeting limits for January third. Uh, twenty twenty four, uh, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move, we approve the minutes from January third, twenty twenty four.
And Aaron.
Second.
Okay, uh, the meeting is seconded, all in favor?
Right.
Right, okay, and I'm going to abstain because I was not at that meeting. So, but if motion does pass. Well, Seth, Penny, moving on. Uh, the one and only item of new, of new business tonight is to uh receive an update on the uh town of South Berwick comprehensive plan goals, policies, strategies. And with that being said, I know that there are multiple people here, I'm not entirely sure who will be giving us that update.
Oh, you're reading.
Yeah, that's a good.
Okay.
Thank you, hi, everybody, nice to meet you, I've met some of you, nice to see you, thanks for having us. Um, I think our intention for tonight was to provide you with a couple of the key sections from the comp plan. Um, and have sort of a general conversation about your thoughts on them and, and also give you an understanding of where we are and the process. So, um, as all of you probably know, we started this process in March of twenty twenty two. And the first phase was uh consisted of a survey, which was very successful, and the sort of lengthy process of going through the inventory chapters of the plan. Um, which is all sorts of background data and analysis about various aspects of the community and where you are now according to the data that we have available. Um, that inventory was wrapped sort of midsummer twenty twenty three, so about six to eight months ago. And we have since then been working on draft what are called goals, policies and strategies, which is just like the comprehensive planning way of saying recommendations. Um, which are all based on findings that were sort of addressed in the inventory. And the process for that has been us kind of going back through conversations that we've had, looking at the survey results, looking at the focus group conversations that we had, so those were um, I'm not gonna get the timing right on those, but sometime last year, we had four um April, yeah, very uh successful focus groups that were specific to four of the major three topics. We invited um subject matter experts and local, you know, folks from town to discuss those topics. Um, so looking at all of that information, the committee has come up with draft um strategies which fall into buckets of policies. And those have been um reviewed sort of monthly as we've gone through the last six or so months. Um, they recently just finished their, their review of the, the land use goals, policies and strategies, which you see before you, uh, which will be the last chapter of goals, policies and strategies that will be in the plan. Um, and from here on out, we are looking at wrapping the plan with two sort of big final things being the future land use map, which is something you may be familiar from your last plan. Um, and the future land use plan that goes along with that. Um, and we can talk a little bit more about those tonight because I think we are interested in some of your thoughts on that, but um to get your eyes on something a little bit more detailed, we wanted to provide you with the two sections that we thought would be of most interest to you. The housing inventory chapter and corresponding goals, policies and strategies, and the land use chapter and corresponding strategies. Um, so from there, I mean, we're happy to answer questions and also, you know, we can get into these materials as much as you'd like to, we can discuss some of the suggestions that are being made or um talk more about, you know, what is, what is common as we wrap the plan, but um, so I'm happy to take the conversation, I don't have to go, do you anything about that, right?
Um, yeah, so I, I, you know, as far as the comp plan itself, I don't think we're here to give a primer on comp planning. But I think, you know, I think if you have any questions on either the process or um, you know, what this all means.
Yeah.
Like while we're sitting here.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we're happy to do that, but you know, again, this sort of forms the backbone of, of, of future zoning changes that you might wanna make. We know that you folks have talked about some of those off and on over the last year, I think it was a decision made that we would we would like to get this done um in order to not just to have a sort of a piecemeal approach to changing any zoning. But uh, you know, in the end, if you wanna have zoning, you need to have an approved comprehensive plan. I think the other thing that Reagan and what the committee, uh, then these folks have been working for two years on it, uh.
Diligently, yeah.
Um, the town initially, when we first started this, had said they, they did not necessarily wanna go to the state to have the state review the plan and then determine whether it was consistent with the State's growth management act, they're not required to do that. Um, about, I don't know, six years, eight months.
More like, yeah, three or four months ago, probably.
The council um decided that in fact, and I think it's a good choice, decided they in fact did want to actually send this plan to the state. Um, and have them determine whether it was consistent with the State's growth management act, which um it would, it makes it a little more um uh difficult, actually, um, but it, it also makes it a little more comprehensive and I think uh you know, in the end, if, if the state determines it is consistent, then that's sort of a feather in your cap as you sort of move forward with planning and zoning and things like that, so. So, uh, yeah, I mean, that's.
That's good.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
So just speaking quickly, um, Justice here, just acting as a town council liaison for the comprehensive plan committee, um, by, and it having a um a certified plan through um, through main, it provides us legal protections projections as a community for our ordinances. A consistent comprehensive plan also, also helps the town get grants, so gets preferreds and that's for grants. We have a lot of things potentially coming through the downtown, this will put us in a great position to have all of our um uh different projects in alignment, which is why we want to bring these things to you, we want all the parties involved in this. And then obviously, you're aware of what good planning makes good communities and we wanna ensure vibrant South Berwick.
Um, and I think, you know, we also, one of the things that's been going, I mean, we're well aware of all the other plans that are taking place in town.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we are trying to have somewhat of a coordinated.
Yeah.
Response or effort, I guess. Um. Whether it's the downtown plan or the market study that was done, um, there's an open space plan that's going on, there's the traffic program. You know, so it's all, we're putting it in a big pot and uh and, you know, I think we, it'll be interesting in the end, but uh, I think the comp plan is sort of part of that, that mix as well.
Yeah.
So. Thank you, very helpful. Um. Most of this stuff always requires ordinance updates. Uh, I think it would be important to think that this board will sit down and do that all. Uh, if you wanna have it done in five years, we're right there with you. Uh, what's the plan? And I would pose that generally, you know, is the town council going to you know, appropriate funds after there's been that conversation to you know, I look at this and the strategies, consider this, that will be detailed. You know, and changing an ordinance is not just deleting one line and adding another line, it's usually all the domino effects. Is there any move to engage a professional funding wise? I don't know who that would be to do all this.
Answer that.
And move it forward.
Yeah, so um, we've already um reached out to SMPDC and other companies, uh, we talked to AJ about it. Um, about our ordinance having to rewrite anyways to bring blocks and pieces of our ordinance up to twenty twenty four, basically. Um, I know that Tim's on board with that and um we aren't going to do that until the goal strategies and procedures are in place anyways, so it can happen all at once. So that you guys aren't workshop after workshop trying to figure it out.
I know that was frustrating for us a while back and we made a motion a long time ago to say, you know, can we stop and bring on some professional assistance just to bring it all back together in one fell swoop.
We do want the comp plan to be completed first.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Our zoning board should follow the comp plan, so that's, that's now why we've been waiting.
That is happening.
Yeah.
So we are following that, we're just waiting for goal policies and procedures to be finalized, is my understanding.
Yeah, so I'd add to that too, well, um, not just having the goals, policies and strategies finished, but your plan should probably be adopted, fully adopted before you take on that effort. Um, which will include, you know, us finishing it, it going to the council, it going to the state for review, there may or may not be um feedback back from the state and revisions after that, so some steps there. I'll also say, one of the things that we've talked about um in terms of implementation of the plan on a whole is that um, you know, Jeff and the council have expressed a lot of interest in intentionally incorporating the strategies from the plan in their annual budget process and identifying specific policies or strategies that they wanna tackle year to year and potentially allocating funds for those things on an annual basis. So I do think that the council has plans to kind of integrate that into their process, we will write that into the plan to a certain extent, that is the intention for implementation, yeah.
So, so Reagan, I had a fantasy that we would just buy a new code and be done. Like take eight years in small town, semi-rural town, Maine, you know.
Yeah.
That one, and we'll just, that's it, we'll make a few little tweaks in it.
We can do that with AI now.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have Pop and Jeff, chat, keep it.
I did notice, and I was, I, I have to say, this was a lot of work and it looks, it looks great, I loved reading it, it was really readable, I thought the stats and the information you provided was exactly what you wanna see and, and on point. Um, I had a few questions, but they're really sort of details, but one thing is, it seems like in um this first part, right, the, the goals, policies and strategies. There is indeed a lot of work the planning board is going to have to do on a new ordinance.
Yeah.
And um, I'm not sure how that, actually that will happen, like, will we be guided by our, her planner from SMPDC? Will there be a timeline, will we, you know, and then it has to go to the town council, I'm not sure if any of this gets worked up altogether? Because you make all these suggestions, which, many which are great, I just.
Yeah.
Um, you know, will there have to be public hearings around every single one of them, are we gonna load them up, I don't know, I just.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure how all that work is gonna happen.
It's a really great question, I think the um you know, there is a line where the comp plan gives as much direction as it can and then you know, the actual actionable application practicality of it has to come down to the folks who are actually making the decisions and giving the work. Um, I will say that I think the committee's intention is that this you know, list of things gives the board direction in terms of the actual items that would be good to see incorporated into a zoning change. How you do that, I think there's some flexibility, there is guidance in terms of um timeline, right, like immediate, short term, long term. Some of these changes might not be things that you want to do in your first big zoning overhaul. Um, and I think that that's acceptable, I don't think the committee or anybody's anticipating that everything here will get done in year one, this is a ten year plan, right?
I'll be dead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, and so the thing about, the thing about the, the goals, policies and strategies is that, you know, we like to try and remember that the old plan a lot of the strategies from the old plan didn't get touched, right? And so the intent of this one is to, one, trim it down and make it a lot more digestible. And two, if you get half or two thirds of these things done, that's miles above the last plan, right? And so we're gonna like kind of keep our expectations that way. Um, in terms of you're actually tackling it, I think there is flexibility for the board to combine several of these into one update or you could pick and choose which ones you think need to go into your first sort of administrative overhaul, I think there's flexibility there. But if you're interested in the committee, you know, putting some time and thought into that, I think we could also provide some direction in terms of that, that's helpful.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess for some of these, when it says like you know, there's sort of, think about doing this, that's pretty clear, think about changing your short line protection zone to be more strict, for example, then you have a discussion. But like examine impacts of extending additional town services enrolled zone, I assume that means there's a cost for the town, we'd have to ask Tim or someone to provide those, and we'd have to get some prep done for some of these, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You know, I think, the other thing, and I'm not sure about the details on each one of the, the strategies and so, or how they're worded, which is sort of a crazy thing to like focus on, but you have to, I mean, sometimes it's like consider, you know, investigate, you know, those sorts of things. There's other things where it's like, you know, do this.
Do this, yeah.
Now, we, I think we, I think we try to avoid that as much as possible.
Well, you walk a line, there are some things that you do.
But, you know, it, it, the, the whole, it's sort of a really fine line in these plans, it's like, if you're very directive then that helps the planning board or whoever's putting the ordinance together, because it says, okay, we need to do this, but if it's sort of a little more, you know, uh squishy then, you know, then there's some flexibility there, but I think, you know, initially, I, I think you just need to take a cut and say, these are the priorities, and I think that that's listed in.
Sure. Yeah. I'd let, and, and just to follow up on your like, how directive is it, I like to think that the strategies are more directive where the inventory backs them up, like pretty fully, you know, or like, we know that this has been an issue for several years, or maybe several plans, let's do something about it versus here's a, you know, emerging issue, we don't necessarily know exactly what the right answer is, maybe you should think about it, I like to think that's sort of where, where that spectrum comes.
So I'll, I'll continue, then I'm gonna shut up and let everybody else have their turn. Um, so one thing I noticed, and this isn't my original thought, because I have talked to Paul a little bit about this um earlier, but um there seems to be a lot of tension around this is what we need and where it's gonna go. Um, in that, like a lot of places, smart growth or transit or design or density wants to be sort of downtown-ish where people can walk to things they need and um we can put more housing down there, but we're sort of built out. And in fact, it noted that a lot of the cluster development and other development is going on in our three, four and five, I think, or our two, three, something like that. And maybe that's not where we wanted exactly, and then we should think about what that looks like in our ordinance, is that, is that about where you've landed too?
Yeah. Like, that's not Kirri.
I mean, I think the big takeaway that we had, and with, and you guys feel free to, Ray, um, was that um you know, with, with the housing issue, statewide and, and Southern Maine in particular, um, yeah, that, you know, you need to start addressing how we can create more housing. Where is it gonna go? And in South Berwick's case, it's very, um, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of place for that within the existing sort of village area unless you do different things, which is you know, maybe, you know, making it easier for the family or, or something else. But, I mean, the bottom line is that most, a lot of the development, the, the developable land is all out in Berwick's. Um, and that's where a lot of the action it seems to be, um, is a lot more developable land than.
Is, is it, and Denise brought this up, Eric, you know, Denise brought up the idea of like creating sort of another, more or another commercial zone. You know what I mean? Like Kirri has the outlets and then Forside and the bypass, so as crazy as that all is, where is downtown Kirri, I'm not really ever sure, but I guess it's the Forside, but you know, we have South Berwick Center, but we could also create some commercial opportunity at some other intersections and build that out and create a sort of a second town center, is that something that's like ever been thought of, or is that something crazy?
Yes.
Yeah.
You were still that talk about knowing about changing some of the area about the two thirty six to mixed use.
Yeah, the two thirty six, I don't think has ever, I, I don't know, two thirty six is, it's just a problem.
Yeah. I think a lot of our conversations around that were sort of directed um also by the market analysis and um, that area is pretty, is pretty heavily focused on in the market analysis in terms of an area for potential development. Uh, but there are a couple of other places that that study identifies, like lower Main Street being one, where, you know, where, which is sort of downtown adjacent, or are there, are there areas close to your village that are maybe even still walkable that have yet to be sort of expanded or not thought about in a commercial sense, right? Like they're, maybe they're currently kind of residential and mixed use kind of thing.
And as we've talked about endlessly, probably, is water and sewer is, is like, you know, critical.
Right, huge, yeah. To minor.
The town's ability to, you know, extend water and sewer, how do you do that? I mean.
You do it.
Proactively extend water and sewer.
Right.
Um, to areas where you wanna grow, it's not something a lot of towns in Maine do. Um, you know.
Okay.
Where would you put the second town center?
Well, I, I thought, you know, what's the little lunch place near the dump, near the transfer station?
Kayden's.
Yeah, Kayden's, over there, it's, it's an intersection that's really well traveled, right? It's got the playing field, they just have got another building, there seems to be space there, there isn't a lot of density or a lot of housing, I mean, you know, I don't really know who owns most of that, but that seems to be some opportunity to, you know, and we've been not suggesting we get rid of any playing fields, I'm gonna say that right now.
But that could be a, a draw, right?
Right, but it, it seems to be, there could be like a whole life there if you started to put, you know, maybe, I don't know, a couple of more stores there, there's Aggies there, and it just, I don't know. That seemed like a great little spot. In the old days, the corner of Old Fields Road and, and Lord's Lane and Flint's Lane right there used to be actually a town center, that was a tavern, the Minotti's house. And, you know.
And like historic development.
Yeah, so there's, you know, there's sort of places, little pockets where there's an intersection and maybe something they are all ready to get it started.
I have that just because that's sort of the next exercise that the committee is going to go through is that if we were going to um, you know, shift development somewhere where would be suitable, right? And so that's just, it's sort of a rhetorical question, but the committee is going to have to make some decisions about that, and so helpful to hear.
And, you know, um, the, um, it's really Elliot, right, but we're one oh one and two thirty six intersect has also a lot of room to build out and a lot of potential, it's on the edge of, of, like I call it, South, South Berwick.
Yeah.
So, um, but that's another, and Elliot's looking to do something with that also, I know, so.
I, I think, you know, down by Brattle Street, I remember one, I mean, I think that is actually a zone for B one. Um, at the intersection of two thirty six and Brattle Street.
Yeah, that one little weird area, I think.
Yeah, but it, it was, wow, that was the first water power site in America, I mean, I mean, where you heard it, I think it was, or somebody told you.
Somebody told you.
It's unsealed.
Oh, yeah.
Gotta be true. Anyway, yeah, but I mean, I think that was an idea like fifteen, twenty years ago, like that could be a little sort of like one of these saddle lane village centers.
Yeah, that's a pretty neat area.
Yeah, yeah, it's sort of interesting, so. Um, but.
Well, from a practical perspective I would, you know, hope, and I think it gets to what Hershey says and kind of what we touched on in the beginning. You know, it's all wonderful to have a plan, but really, you know, to see a, a town planner here in town that could help drive a bus and keep an eye on it on a regular routine basis to begin to help integrate the comprehensive plan, but have access to other professionals that can assist with the drafting of the ordinances so that it can keep going, you know? We've all seen the languishing of, wow, wonderful this is, but nothing ever happens. And so I am hoping that from the planning board, for one member of the planning board, you know, I would, it would be so much better to sit here and frankly have something to respond to in terms of for, you know, potential ordinance changes, which I think is what we had discussed prior a long time ago. Uh, and then at least have something to react to and have constructive conversation rather than starting from a, you know, a blank slate. Uh, so I would, you know, encourage, I think from a practical perspective, that would be the step one to have the council appropriate somebody through the budget process, I understand how that works. But, you know, bring on a town planner, because this is a long, long-term process. And to have that person there guiding it and helping it through would be really good. Again, and have access to other funds to bring on the professionals when needed to get this done, I think would really go a long way in helping us move forward. And I know from my perspective, that would be very helpful. Uh, because it, you're gonna put it to volunteer board, you're gonna get volunteer time.
Mm-hmm. And I do wanna, um, Mr. Shit, about, there's a strategy that's um evaluate the need for additional planning staff, including, including a town planner and make recommendations as needed, and we had a fair thorough discussion about language for that.
It's been confusing from, from my perspective through the years that I've been on this, you know? No offense to anybody, because we're getting the work done, but who am I, who are we talking to? We have one planner, we have Jen, then we have another planner, then we have SMPDC, it's a little confusing. I mean, we're getting through it, uh, and we're doing okay with it, but it's, you know, it'd be great to have kind of a centralized, true comp planner. Uh, that is, you know, helping us, you know, with this stuff and coming in, in tonight, backfilling the agenda, we're gonna talk about this particular section. And we're gonna talk tonight about, you know, the suggested changes to an ordinance, that would be very helpful. To have a professional there to help us walk through that. That would be very helpful to have a professional there to help us walk through that and take it. So your decision shouldn't be A or B, you know, what do you wanna do?
And you know, Elliot has a full time planner who's pretty busy. Um and when I met with him for my job, um I realized that, you know, he knows the town inside out. And to me, that is, that is the most valuable thing. You guys have that expertise and we could get the expertise. But it's that he knows every parcel in Elliot and he has this sort of big view as a planner of where he thinks things should go. And I think that is invaluable. We can't put a price on that.
Yeah, it's a champion, right? I think the committee also really recognizes that that continuity is important, right? Like we can do our best coming in from from a third party, but yeah, I think the committee definitely seems that bound.
I see a continued role, clear clearly in my view for S and P D C for the technical expertise aspect. But like that terminology, the champion, now you have that conduit, you know, between everything going on in the town. Who, someone keeping track of it, and then working with the professional technical folks to help get it done. My question, and we've been talking about needing to get additional resources for a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning. For, well, a little bit, since I don't afford anyway. Um but I do wonder if there's like low hanging fruit that we can, you know, grab out of this. So I mean, some of the stuff, uh some of the stuff probably does take additional resources. But some of those zoning changes probably wouldn't be that much to like, you know. Go through and see some things that could do fairly easily.
But I think that gets to the, what led to the discussion with the board and others can fill in too. Was that we were doing a lot of the low hanging fruit, the thing that we were doing this thing, then having a public area for that thing, and then going back and doing another one. And I think you were like, can we just kind of consolidate this? It is getting a little, you know, sometimes it gets a little confusing, like what are we talking about? Yeah, I mean, I I think one of the things we usually recommend to a town um is is, and I think it's in here as a strategy. Is really doing sort of a forensic look at your zoning ordinance to see like. What doesn't, I mean, some some things are outdated, they reference laws that don't exist. I I I'm not sure about South Hurwigs in particular, but.
It's common, yeah.
I mean, you, I mean, you folks, you have a shoreline.
Parking really needs to be reviewed.
Yeah, plus you have a shoreline zoning, your shoreline zoning is in two different places. And it's like there's a shoreline zoning ordinance, but then it's also some of the ord, your regular zoning ordinance. I mean, it's a separate standalone ordinance, but then there's sections in your regular ordinance that refer to shoreline zoning, the guidelines and standards and stuff. So, I mean, it really.
Planning board office, you could have helped with all of your slums.
I was screwed up, like twenty five percent.
But we also have the theme, the 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 flood rate maps, we're gonna have to go through and adopt those in short order. You know, and those are coming, I don't know how those affect us, but they just released those, so.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, it's always a good start, and you know, a lot of towns, you know, have an in-depth discussions with the code officer and said. What are you seeing that does not make any sense in these ordinance, I mean.
What what's the the actual timeline? Maybe I missed it to actually um get get this completed.
Yeah, our goal is to go to the council in May.
May, so if we wait until May, even if we didn't get the state to sign off and everything, there's a lot of this stuff that we could start. And there's some stuff that we could work on that are forming a housing committee, for example, and talking to other towns. And having people come in and talk about some of these things that are, to me, not about the ordinance. That we could just start getting information and, you know, implementing that without having to wait longer, right? So maybe we should, you know, the point would be to have a meeting and look through. I assume it's not gonna change up a lot in the next few months.
Unless you guys have thoughts or suggestions to change in, yeah. Yes, pretty much, this is the committee's draft. I mean, it will go, there're gonna be some more public input that is. And and that's gonna go to the council, so there could definitely be revisions, but I don't see it.
You know, I mean, I I do think, you know, the future land use map is, you know, gonna be.
Sort of key.
Sort of key, and we're gonna be sitting down on that shortly, and you know, sometimes they don't change very much, I mean. Yeah, I mean, South Hurwigs zoning has sort of been the same, I mean, in in the big picture. You know, village, residential, you know, you know, it it it's pretty, I would say typical, it actually works very well. But um, you know, it, but because of the issues with housing and density, I mean, maybe that maybe it is a little different this time. I don't know. I mean, you know, the two thirty six issue has come up a few times. Do we, you know, allow more residential there? Do we sort of have commercial nodes along two thirty six? What would that look like? You know, are there opportunities outside of the village for more, you know, higher density housing? I, you know, I mean, those are like big issues and, you know, people don't like to hear it all the time. But um, you know, we're sort of just running out of room in the in the village itself for.
Well, and also your surveys seem to indicate that a lot of the town is at odds with what we actually need. And I wonder what a nightmare that will be for the start of public areas, so.
Let's do that in about two or three years when we're, our terms are all up.
I I'll just wait when we're done, that I really will, that's it for me. Um so I don't know, people know, but I work in supportive housing and affordable housing, so of course I'm very dedicated to that. And um, you know, one of the emphasis it seems is we have a lot of single family housing, we have a lot of homeownership. And yet, um, you know, there was only one suggestion about, I think, I don't know, a ten percent rule and maybe leaving impact fees. And um, there are so many. That's what I want. Um, we could make deeper suggestions, right? We could make suggestions where we could really do better, I think, in terms of encouraging affordability. Um and maybe even more rental housing, who wanted to, and what that would bring. So ten percent is not gonna get us there. And if your chart had, I think, I don't know, it was under thirty percent M I plus the thirty to fifty percent M I. Whereas where they were really lacking units. And, you know, if you make a hundred twenty five percent area median income, um and you pay more than thirty percent of your income, what's left is a lot of money still. Whereas if you make fifty percent area median income and pay more than thirty percent, you're not left with a a lot. So I I'm not too worried about a hundred twenty five percent area median income. But, you know, addressing those problems, we need to have, I think, really a a deeper solution than, you know. Than is than is suggested.
Is there an inclusionary, do we even put ten percent?
A level of at least ten percent of new residential development built or placed during the next decade.
Yeah, that, so the uh, one of the things to note here. And is that the star strategies are ones that are recommended by the state checklist. The consistency checklist, so that one specifically is one that's recommended by the state. Um, I think the, that mean that doesn't stop us from having second one or more that go deeper though.
Yeah, I mean, that's like one of those squishy.
Yeah, it's very squishy, yeah.
To achieve, I mean, but.
Whatever that means, and how you do you track it and yada yada, there's a lot of questions there.
You know, I mean, some towns, and I think, say, if you're gonna build a, maybe it's over a certain size project. But ten percent of your units need to be affordable, you know, um, inclusionary zoning, I don't know.
We sort of, we do have a, but it's specific to subdivisions though. A provision for a percentage of certain subdivisions over a certain size be be made affordable to low mother income and below or moderate income families.
I just, I just think for the, the emphasis on affordability, which ran throughout everything I read. Doesn't just seem reflected in some of the, in some of the suggestions, the solutions. So, and I know there'll be a housing committee that will, will work through that, as will the planning board and town council. So I know it's not, it's not over here, but I'm just.
Is there something in particular that you're hoping to see that wasn't there?
Well, I would love to see fifty percent be affordable. Actually, I think to see a hundred percent affordability. I mean, that seems to be where we're missing housing and why people can't hire people, why people are leaving the state. We're in, let's face it, everybody says it, we're in the middle of a housing crisis. So encouraging people to build eight hundred thousand dollar market rate houses is not gonna help anybody.
Yeah.
It's gonna help those people, maybe, but you know.
Are there incentives that you guys have considered sort of as a committee in the past for those types of developments? Like what sorts of things could be trades off and they were.
No, I don't think any.
The town of Kittery has had a, what started out as an affordable housing committee is not just a housing committee. But they implemented a overlay in their business district to include um more density bonuses, so sort of like L D two thousand three. Um and I still would say we could go further in terms of encouraging it. And and also the town itself, you know, and this is in your suggestions, this isn't my thought. But is to reach out and have better partnerships with obviously people who do affordable housing like me. So, but each time I will have to accuse myself of anything, like still.
You know, I I think on the housing side, I mean, there, well, just through our office, we're gonna be doing a great deal on sort of regional housing. Sorts of ideas, I mean, we don't, we don't build housing. But we're hoping to infuse some money into sort of local towns. The technical assistance, helping with ordinance updates and things like that. Um we do, we are, I think, gonna get, we'll call it significant, because. You know, we're in Maine, you know, but um, you know, we probably, I I think we're gonna have some resources available to help on that side of it. As you, as you folks look at any sort of zoning changes related to housing. But um, you know, the the A D U thing is interesting. You know, I know the state, yeah, it it L D two thousand three has been in place for like a while now, and we're not seeing very many people actually.
Using.
Using it, which is sort of interesting, but that's early. And um, but on the A D U side, you know, the state's looking at sort of creating a stuff, like like a stock set of.
Like a re-approved site design for A D Us, the state is working on that part.
There's somebody working at NEPA at New Hampshire um Housing that uh put together a great presentation at the Seacoast. In the Workforce Housing Coalition of the Seacoast, and it, I was really impressed, I was not a big A D U fan. But um, they looked at a lot of places around the country, I think Seattle, Wisconsin. Where their planning departments basically set up the technical assistance on site. That seemed to be the biggest impediment for people getting their A D U done, is they just don't understand the pro, it.
Permanent property.
The process, right, and they need help with it. Kittery actually has grant money too, if you wanna, this period of system affordability, they'll give you a grant to get you going on your A D U. So they incentivize it that way, and I think there's state money for that as well.
Well, I think the A D U thing is, I mean, since the law is there and we just need help. I mean, a lot of people will probably use it if they know how, like you said.
Yeah.
I I don't know. I mean, I was very intrigued when I saw the whole ten percent about the subdivision issue. Because I mean, a lot of the issues that you see with affordable housing is not only, well, having finding the space. They're finding the builder who wants to actually build it at a profit.
Yeah.
And, you know, which is one of the reasons why when we, when we were talking about uh the, you know, mixed use development. Although that was not necessarily gonna be affordable, but sometimes when you, when you have that higher density in a downtown residential area. It's easier if you're building a hundred apartments, take ten of them and put them at a affordable housing rate. Which it would be, and I'm, and looking at this when I saw about the subdivision, I was wondering what that kind of subdivision would look like. How do you take uh, you know, cause most builders coming down here, the reason they wanna build that five to eight hundred thousand dol- dollar houses. Cause that's where the money is.
So you don't rely on those people to build affordable housing, you rely on places like the Vesta or Fair Tide. Or the Housing Partnership, people who are nonprofit developers who use um federal subsidies. Or low income housing tax credits or supportive housing fund or housing trust fund money. Um and we don't operate at a profit, we pay ourselves a developer fee, but we're not interested in making a profit, and that's how you build affordable housing. So, and um, you know, we'll have somebody come in and talk about how it gets done and the process forth, and that way.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that, you know.
Like Sam Bill. They're not gonna put in affordable housing there.
Well, yeah, and and I know a lot of builders were, you know, that who, the the that for them, that would be in, you know. They don't wanna drag down the market value of their other homes that they're building, is what they're looking at. And that, and this is, I I I I agree with you, I think it needs to be built. And I think there are ways that you could do it, especially if you're looking in a, eh, the mixed use type situation. Where you can put some very nice things in, have retail to help with that profit margin, also build it, build affordable housing. And, you know, and the point being that we are gonna need private money in addition to the nonprofits. I would love to have a conversation alone, because uh.
You know, um, Rye, the town of Rye as a town in the planning board decided there was no entry level housing for people with families there. Right? The houses were either huge and unaffordable.
Oh, yeah.
Where there were sort of like condo or townhouses that didn't have enough bedrooms. And they asked T A, the Housing Partnership to come in and do a subdivision. Um, something I never thought we would do in my life, but we did. And eight of them, eight of those forty houses are set aside for affordability, with the idea that the other houses basically pay for it. It's, and it is all private money, but it's done by a nonprofit that does not have a profit margin. They have a, we'll pay ourselves a developer fee and we'll make money to pay ourselves, but.
You know, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, when it started, which was before COVID, the price point on the the eight affordable units. Um was, I think, about three twenty five to three fifty, which is still out of range of a lot of people I know who make thirty five thousand dollars a year, right? So, um, but not for Rye.
Yeah.
Um, and at this point, they're up to four hundred K, I think, the affordable houses.
Yeah.
And the ones that were, the market rate ones were, I don't know, priced originally at four something, they're now up to seven fifty, I believe.
Yeah.
So um.
Do you know if the town owned that land that they?
No, the land was donated by, um, I think his name is Mr. Ricker, he owned the skate park place.
Okay.
He had also given money for um White Birch as the senior housing project down that road off of one there. And um, so the donated land, the planning board really moved this forward, they wanted it done, it would take a long time to get done. We did little pocket neighborhoods, so it doesn't look like a typical cluster, which I think is much more the direction these things should go in. You know, they're very neighborhood-y and they have little greenings and everything, case is inward and all the parking's outside and not in front of your house. And the garage isn't the most important thing now. So, you know, there are a lot of great community space, and um, so in some ways, you know, and there are duplexes as well, we did duplexes. And Lassel Architect did the design work on it. And it stalled, but it's an example of, you know, private money, but also it's driven by a nonprofit that's doing it.
Yeah.
Which can have some affordability.
Uh, that's, those are all good um, good suggestions, I think, and I can, I can take some more. You know, I think we could, we could look back at the housing recommendations again and see there are places where, even if we. You know, include a couple more considers in there of maybe it's not required ten percent, but consider ten to fifteen or whatever that. You know, add some, add some deeper options so that those are conversations.
Yeah, just on another sort of note, but still on topic. Um, when we met with the concert, when we had the focus groups, we had met with the conservation group, or conservation folks. Uh land trust people, uh people from the conservation division, and there was. And, you know, this is sort of like taking off in some other places statewide. There has been a lot of discussion amongst those groups about, you know, they're all out there conserving land, but I think there's a realization that they are actually. Sort of contributing partially to the affordability issue by, you know, taking. And, you know, a lot of the land they conserve is in rural areas, which is what we want them to do. But um, you know, it does, I I I think it would, you know, there was, they seem to be accepting that, like, okay, maybe we need. We can be part of the solution here on on affordability, whether it's doing a, you know, a land deal for conservation purposes. But also building in affordable housing on it as as well, um, some other places, similar land trusts have actually done that. So um, you know, I mean, that's a discussion worth having too.
Okay, any further conversation? This is a good, uh, it's very helpful. Uh, I'm personally inclined to let the work of the committee uh continue to guide us on this. Uh, and I guess I would say, uh, as a town, we should, uh, what was the, the great, uh, seek to, what was the?
Seek to achieve.
Seek to achieve, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To achieve uh on, from a budgeting perspective, do sufficient funding to help keep this process going.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I know there's been some conversations, I haven't paid attention to them, maybe it's already there and it works, you know. Uh, so I think that would be very helpful on our end.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, folks have continued to look at these, you know, I know you said you had a couple like detailed questions. Please feel free to email me thoughts or questions and.
Yeah, where did I two go? I see I two is, I knew you, you've got rid of I two somehow, made it just I one. What happened to I two in your maps?
In the maps?
Yeah.
That's a good question, unless they're, they're probably I one and I two are the same color and I just. That's a good question. Unless they're, they're probably I one and I two are the same color and I just didn't.
Yeah, they're very, very.
They're zoned differently, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. What allows us to ask, what does that sound like?
Well, no, but it's, I mean, it's in the data. I mean, it's in the, it's different on the.
That's something that gets to the picture, I went to debate several months ago about whether or not we should introduce mixed use.
Right.
I think, you know, do we combine them? There was a little opposition because residential's allowed here, but not there. I don't remember what one. Uh, I don't think there's really any opposition to the concept of mixed use, but I really don't remember why we dropped it, but there was, we were getting more into the weeds, there was like more to it. And then we opted to just stop and let this process play out. So I do know that there's some interest in the industrial zones to really kind of convert that work to mixed use.
And that, that was what I was talking about. We, we went over that, we were doing the market analysis. Where, I mean, it suddenly, it doesn't really be like, why does it make sense to have only allow residential on one side and two thirty-six and not the other one?
Well, there's a C and P corridor there that doesn't allow you to, cause you'd be clapping this weird. It's gonna be how it looks.
It, it, I mean, it is a difficult space. I think it is, like, it's, it's hard to avoid that it is a difficult space.
It is difficult.
With that, with the corridor and all of that, like, there are towns.
Well, that's gonna be able to build that up the way Elliot has and have some kind of commercial tax base there, because everything has to be set back. You can't get to the edge of the road. And it makes it difficult, I think, to run a business, right? I mean, Aubrey's is suffering, they, yeah, because they don't have that kind of walk-in business and, or I'm driving by it. Or the signage is there.
Yeah, I understand though. That was fully approved by a prior planning board to do that, and the ordinance changes were made to do that.
Yeah.
Turned it going in, never happened. I don't know what happened to that.
It was what?
The, the ordinances were changed or waived or was issued or whatever. I don't quite remember for the owner of that property to put in an actual sign.
No, I think we actually didn't. I think we didn't approve it and said you had to use the signage ordinance we have. And now there's a big debate on the bulletin, of course, which I tend to not look at, but.
Come on.
I'm not gonna go there. Let's just say, some people, a lot of people put out a lot of reasons to sign it, because they got it all wrong.
Yeah, I, I would, I'll remember that. I think I was helping with one, or no, I think I thanked you.
We have an ordinance, they stuck to the ordinance.
But there was a big fight about that sign and it went on for, a year.
There was, I think, I thought the planning board a couple of years ago.
I was all for changing that to allow, cause you know, it's not safe to drive by and then have to turn around because you missed your coffee shop, so.
I thought the planning board gave them the authorization to put in a brand new sign.
They're allowed to sign, they're allowed to sign it to certain size and it had to look a certain way, and it was, it was actually not adequate, I think, is the problem. They wanted something else.
Yeah.
They wanted bigger sign with more information, and I think that would have been, thank you, safer. So.
So you can read through the highway?
Yeah, yeah, so as you drive by going fifty-five miles an hour and you're looking at your phone to find it, you know, right, hit a, hit a Marshwood High School student.
You need to do change in L D side, don't wait in.
Oh, my gosh, that's, that's.
Go tell the police station.
Anyway, I, two thirty-six is, uh, kind of like a bit of a mystery, so, you know.
That, yeah. It sounds like it will be the sort of topic, I, I mean, maybe.
Well, it's gonna be a big part of the conversation, but I also don't think it would be, you know, I don't think the committee is planning on putting all the eggs in one basket and saying all, the key to all of South Hurwicke's future commercial, um, growth and mixed use growth is in the, uh, you know, I one or I two, so I hope three six. I think, I would hope that our future land use map is a little bit more comprehensive. And maybe it's an idea that the market doesn't actually play out, but maybe we have some other options.
And also, where does industry go then? Cause that's our industrial zone, so where people put, you know, their storage areas and their, you know, both storage.
You do need a fix for that, it's true.
Do, so did I hear, was, was there some consensus on sort of investigating, um, you know, smaller sort of village, like, what should we call it? Um, village commercial areas, you know, outside, like, smaller.
Village, like, yeah. Village nodes.
Yeah, ambulance or something.
I know, we have talked about that from time to time, either here or out of the bottom, where like on a sidewalk or something, I don't know. I know we've talked about that.
And one of those areas is the Cadence area.
I was like, if you live in North South Hurwicke, there's nothing, you have to get in your car to get, like, so you wanna get some milk. Like, what if you guys have a little, like, candy spa on the corner like I grew up with, where you just walk down the street and get your milk and then, or even if you have to drive there, but there's like this, there's like a who desert from, you know.
Norman Rockwell League.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe, maybe people up there would appreciate having a little.
That would be me.
Cluster.
Yeah.
Well, the Dunnebrook area, I mean, they're working on a school, charact, yeah, peaceful area.
Yeah.
No, I think a few little identifiable, like, hubs or nodes would be really smart.
Right.
It's funny, the, the way planning sort of, you sort of end up doing what you tried to do twenty years, I think, like, I, I think there was a, at that intersection with Aggie Estates and, and where that store is, I think that was the recommendation like ten or fifteen years ago.
Well, and it.
You know, they, they, they had, you know, it was like.
Here, I got a plate.
I need to pull it out of the file cabinet.
So, anyway.
Great. Well, thank you for great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to the committee members. This was, I'm sure, a two-year slog that, you know, was really a lot, so, thank you.
But, yeah. So I'm kind of inclined to go along with what the committee's coming up with and seems to help to develop the words around that, so. You know, I think that would be a good start.
Yeah.
All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. In the loop.
All right, is there any old business, nothing, nothing, any board member comments?
Yeah, it's the spam.
Nope, all right, they're all pretty good.
Um, can we just talk about one thing before we adjourn?
Sure.
Um, so our meeting started at seven. Do we wanna keep them at seven, or do we wanna talk to them at six thirty?
Jen, that was so, not passive for us exactly, just say, why?
This, I'm asking, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, it sounds like you're totally not invested.
I would have no problem with, I can make six thirty work just as easily as seven, so.
Six thirty's fine. I think it's, it comes down to everyone's work schedule and like, you know what I mean? There's my thought.
Uh, I'm happy with six thirty, uh, and
Take it.
Yeah, the, the issue is that, you know, I wouldn't have been able to get here until seven o'clock tonight anymore, uh, so it's kind of a crapshoot here and there, so, but I'm fine with trying, you know, see if it works. I'm, I'm personally, hey, I'd like to get home early just like you.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the planning board meetings to a six thirty start con in the future and as on a trial basis. Seconded.
Very. I'm like in the after discussion, all favor. Hi, don't, yeah, okay, let's make it happen.
It'll be a year.
Well, it's because like, our next meeting, yeah, our next meeting is pretty hefty. We have, um, quite a hefty meeting on the twenty-first, just pre-warn you guys now. And starting a half an hour earlier might just be helpful to everyone involved.
We're not suggesting that we now, we still go to nine o'clock though, right? Like we're six thirty to enter. Well.
So I think, I think that the planning board needs to also decide that no new business after eight thirty or no new business after nine o'clock. Because it is on our agenda that way. If you wanna keep nine, I'm fine with that, but I hear what you're saying.
Well, I think the problem that we traditionally run into, we've unified a couple of the sides, they've been really fit. And so we wouldn't even be taking up a bit of the same business.
Yeah.
So the same business is fine, but.
Well, I, I, I think in theory we should stick to our two-hour limit, but I think there are gonna be times where if it goes over, it goes over. And I could put it at two AM, I don't care. I'm up. I know.
So, I'm pretty apologized, I'm gonna be in Pennsylvania for the twenty-fourth.
No, lovely.
Who's gonna be here on the twenty, oh, wait a minute.
Do we have a?
Pre-February break.
We need to know how to tie it, cause it's, it's pretty hefty if you guys aren't gonna be able.
Can you zoom in?
Oh, yeah, I can zoom in if you need.
Yeah, you're, you're welcome to zoom in if you want. I mean, if you.
Oh, yeah, I'm a kid with me, you know.
I'll be here.
Is it school vacation week?
Yeah, it's school vacation, I'll be here, okay.
You guys consent? Okay, good, thank God. All right, good.
Push it off again.
Huh?
Push it off again.
No, let's not.
We adjourn.